What's up, Porple? The Porple in the Box. Fielding your phone. Cold chili bun. Let's go to San Diego. Mr. Drew Brees. Where it's probably seventy-five degrees. Forty-five degrees. We're at like the high for the day right now. Starting out in the thirties. Go up ten degrees all day long, like five, six degrees, seven degrees. Pretty cold for New Orleans. New Orleans standards, pretty darn cold. It's a rinse and repeat for about the next week and a half. Literally, like a rinse and repeat for the next week and a half, just about every single morning. For the next week and a half, ten days. Mid-thirties, high thirties. Might creep up into the forties to start the day, maybe a few days. And then high temperatures are mostly in the forties. Maybe a few times creeping up into the fifties, but... Pretty cold through this week, through the weekend, and next week. Cold by New Orleans standards without a... Got a good one lined up for you. Two big hours coming your way on the YouTube, the Nutri-Now with Corey Johnson on YouTube. Click to subscribe to our YouTube channel. We're on TV, state live. Channel four, Spectrum, Channel three thirty-three, from four to five thirty. The first ninety minutes of the two-hour talk radio program on television all over the state. Got a lot to discuss. I went down to Bourbon and Canal. Went down to Bourbon and Iberville today. Checking out the scene. Memorial now. Folks writing messages on the wall of the... They have the side building that is, that faces Canal Street, but... Down Bourbon, it would be on the left if you're going down Bourbon towards S one eight. That's where that barrier is with the like two-foot panel that would come up to stop a vehicle. I'll talk about that. I brought a tape measure down there. From the wall of the building to that barrier. Went down to the next block, Bourbon and Iberville, where the bollards would be to the edge of the building. Bollards, no bollards. Barrier in place, not in place. An eighty-inch wide Ford F-150 Lightning can easily go down the left sidewalk at Bourbon and Canal and down the right sidewalk at Iberville and Bourbon. On the sidewalk. Just one each, one on each sidewalk. But on every single street throughout the French Quarter, all of that's coming. A hardened French Quarter. President Biden, First Lady Jill Biden, on the way to the French Quarter as we speak. I-ten from Kenner into the city eastbound. I-ten from Kenner into the city essentially shut down. As the motorcade progresses towards the French Quarter and Ground Zero of that terrorist attack. We're going to talk to this guy about that. Former New Orleans City Council President Arnie Filco joins us live on the program. Arnie, Happy New Year!
Happy New Year, Corey. Hope you and your family are well.
Yeah, it was a tough way to start the new year, that's for sure.
Yeah, this has been a, this has been a really hard week. You know, it seems like about a month since New Year's, you know, Eve and Day. And it's only, you know, it's only a handful of days here, but, you know, what's happened in New Orleans is tragic and horrific and evil and, you know, now we're picking up the pieces and, you know, I think, Corey, I think it's important to understand that, you know, we, we've lost, you know, fourteen innocent souls and many people still hospitalized and, you know, our best wishes go out to, to all of the families and victims and, you know, let's hope that they rest in peace. And so, you know, I know we're going to talk a lot about the Quarter and the hardening and all of that, but I think it's also important that, you know, for all of us to keep in mind that a lot of these, you know, like folks have not even had funerals yet and that we keep them in our thoughts and prayers.
No doubt. Arnie Filco's with us. Hey, Arnie, I want to get into all of that, but do you mind if I start off on another topic?
Sure.
Because you're a humble guy and you deflect. You kind of run from this stuff, but, uh... Some of the best news that I heard today, just looking on social media. The fact that you're considering, thinking about, maybe running for city council again.
Well, it did hit the news in an article that was in Noah dot com. And, you know, the honest answer is, is I am considering it. I'm going to a meeting, doing my due diligence. I don't think, you know, you can make a decision to run for elected office. I think you need to do, you know, some work behind it. And, you know, whether I run or not, and it probably will take several weeks before I make that final call, but whether I run or not, this is the kind of thing that's interesting. And I truly love New Orleans and I want to see this city reach its potential. It was the honor of my life to serve on the City Council after Katrina for the security that I did. That was obviously a very historic time in our city and I think the next four years are going to be historic. And we're going to have a new mayor, we're going to have, you know, some of the, some on the council will be new, some will come back, but, um, again, you know, this is, uh, this is a very personal decision and, you know, I will try to do what I think is in the best interest of the community and also our families. But, um, the one thing, whether I run or not, is, is I'm going to continue to give back on anything that's important here and, you know, there may be other ways to do that besides, you know, being in office. It won't be, Corey, but I very much appreciate your, your words. I see someone like yourself that, you know, has been such a big part of the city for decades.
Well, we need people like you, honest, hardworking, getting things actually done, working for the people for a change. It's refreshing. But yeah, on the other side, I hate to even say this because I'm selfish and I want you to run. You don't have to do a thing. You've already done your civic duty many times over a few lifetimes of civic duty.
Well, that's nice to be just saying. I appreciate, you know, we are such a great city and I think that's why it was so painful for all of us to wake up, you know, on New Year's Day and see the headlines blasting across the entire walls about what happened in New Orleans. Because, you know, I told my wife this, I mean, we've lived here now for twenty-five years. I mean, I don't know there's another city in the world that's gone through some of the crises that we've gone through from hurricanes and Katrina and coming back from that and pandemics and, um... I mean, you just name it. Uh, it's just unbelievable what, what New Orleans has endured and it's remarkable how strong and courageous and resilient the people are here. You know, it's, it's a testament to, to the strength of our community and that's why, you know, I have a confidence that our communities are really, really, uh, do well at going into the future here and correct some of the deficiencies and keep all the good, you know, keeps us in this community.
Arnie Filco's with us. One thing that you were doing, Arnie, right when you got out, uh, and as council president and on the city council, trying to get NORAD going again. And when you left public life, the emphasis on NORAD went away.
Yeah, you know, that's, it's one of the biggest regrets of my professional life because, you know, the council and, and, and I worked really hard in those years, two thousand, what, seven to ten? Because we wanted to really create a better recreation system, a more equitable system for everyone. And we did two years of public meetings. We had what was called the citizens advisory panel. We looked at best practices from around the country. And then it went to the voters. And the voters overwhelmingly voted in 2010 to create a new system that was, um, more independent of the politics of our city, that had, uh, commission members. It was a public-private partnership. It put the emphasis on making sure that our facilities were maintained and that the program, whether it was down by the city or by outside nonprofits.
Hey, Arnie, Arnie, I don't mean to interrupt you. Hang on one second. I got to take a quick break. We're coming right back. More with Arnie Filco.
The Woodhouse Days Bar, five area locations, New Orleans, Beverly, Slidewell, Baton Rouge, and now Mandeville. A day of relaxation is just moments away at the Woodhouse Days Bar. The Woodhouse Bar.
New Orleans is the gateway to a new commerce, engine that moves Louisiana and our country's role for more than a hundred and twenty-five years. Fort Nola has continued to deliver the goods we use each and every day, by river, rail, and by road. No matter what, it all happens right here, delivering Louisiana's future at the heart of New Orleans. You're working with it. Learn more about your port of origin, visit Fort Nola dot com. Do you know Rousset's own Angus beef? Angus beef's natural farming means more succulent. Whether you choose Rousset's USDA prime choice or select, it'll be only Angus beef when you get it at Rousset's. Taste like home. Young's Dry Cleaning has free pickup and delivery. Drive Young's Dry Cleaning has absolutely free pickup and delivery over all this he's spent for this town. Call Young's, two eight 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 three eight one, or online at youngsdrycleaning.com. The Nola Coalition loves our kids and we love our city. People are here for their future. Obviously, our resources, the Nola Coalition will create a safe home for our city and all of that. So what does need to help reduce violence, invest in our children, and drive generational change? Join now at nolacoalition.com. Trey Yan in Mandeville. Four years, serving the finest Louisiana-inspired Chinese cuisine. Open Tuesday through Sunday. Trey Yan.
Why would you stay in your glasses if you're in the middle of a crowd? Come to Art and Eyes. Art and Eyes is not one of the eyeglasses. It's one of the finest eyewear shops in the country. They have all the best worn, precision engineered prescription lenses and gorgeous high-quality frames from the heart of Europe, Japan, and the United States. Our products are thought and curated. We're here to help you find exactly the right frames. Art and Eyes on the magazine, press, and magazine.
The French bread of the city of New Orleans. Good to the last crumb. Reidenheimer French Bread.
For game-changing innovation, look to the Laitra family of companies located in Harrahham. Intralox, a later company, changed the game when they invented modular plastic conveyor belts over forty years ago. These belts and innovative Intralox technology are transforming movement in manufacturing facilities around the world. Intralox is a dynamic global company now hiring in production, warehousing, shipping, and more. If you want to be part of our successful team, visit laitra.com. That's L-A-I-T-R-A-M dot com.
Come experience the best smoothies in the metro at Smoothie Cafe. Being a father has been a unique franchise in decades. On Jackson Highway, across the box, on the airline area of the bar by Clawsburg. Smoothie Cafe. Value your whole. Thank you, everybody. For custom plantation-style water shutters, that's easy. Perfect for anything you're doing, including large frames, fridge doors, side doors, and arches. American-made S three hundred shutters are available in many colors. You will come out to that area and you will see fast delivery. Plus, they're virtually magnets-free. Don't wait, bet anymore. Better if they use the right length.
You're on the news for now with Corey Johnson. Women are often throwing toilet items at me saying you're the possessor of the cool factor. I have to, I have to fight off the ladies. Ninety minutes of fun, every weekday afternoon, on Fox Channel four, on Spectrum Channel three thirty-three from four p.m. to five thirty. I thought we played Fantasy Friday. Oh, I didn't think that was a regular rejoin from Monday through Thursday. Wow. Hey, Lebanon's Cafes open at nine thirty. That's no fantasy. They open at eleven a.m. every weekday morning, every morning, week and weekend, eleven a.m. to nine thirty, seven days a week. Lamb chops, shish kebabs, some of the finest Middle Eastern food anywhere. Carrotton at Jeanette by the Streetcar Barn, eleven a.m. to nine thirty, Lebanon's Cafe. Arnie Filco is with us, former New Orleans City Council President, talking about... Arnie, before we move on, I hate, I hated to interrupt you. So the voters approved a new NORAD in 2010 and what happened from there?
Well, like a lot of things in New Orleans, it tied up in a lot of politics and, uh, the, one of the objectives of the reform movement was to make it more independent. Unfortunately, you know, it became the same department, basically, maybe a new name and a new commission, but it basically was, uh, you know, controlled by City Hall and the mayor's office. And that wasn't the, the, uh, the intent. I mean, there was a whole plan behind it and, you know, unfortunately, I think that's largely continued as we've had several mayors now. So, you know, it was brought to light in a... Especially relating to some... Normally, they've been maintained. You know, bringing that as we get into the next elections, that, that can change because I think the, the NORAD reform that you've proposed is now what we have now and I think we can do much better.
Yep, no doubt. Hey, Arnie, uh, when will you know again? And we'll move off this topic if you, just because, uh, not to be redundant, I saw it on social media today. A lot of people know about it now. It's all over. It made me very happy, just the fact that you're considering running for New Orleans City Council. When will you make a decision? Within the next few weeks?
Yeah, I would say within the next few weeks. Again, I, I don't want to, I don't want to be positive or negative about it because there really is a lot of due diligence that I've got to perform, but, uh, whether I, again, I don't want to repeat it, but whether I run or don't run, you know, I'm going to be part of making this city great and making it better and working with our leadership to do that. So, you know, we'll see how the tips fall over the next few weeks.
I would never say to the public, using this platform especially to make Run Arnie Run bumper stickers or someone buy a billboard that says...
I kind of liked the Corey Johnson run from many years ago. I was a big fan of that. You know that.
I was too. I just couldn't get it over the top like you. I needed the fire engine.
That brings back good memories, that red fire engine.
Yep, you'd have a whole crew of folks. I'm like, man, Arnie's got a bunch of voters right there, just on the fire engine helping him out.
That was a fun time.
Yep. Arnie, uh, just a crazy situation. I mean, so many different things to discuss on this. The fourteen lives lost on Bourbon Street, you said it best earlier, that's the most important thing to focus on, keep those, those families and friends and thoughts and prayers. A lot of these people haven't even been buried yet. A lot of folks have been hypercritical of, uh, the city of New Orleans, the dysfunction we have in the city of New Orleans. Is the city of New Orleans to blame for this terrorist attack on Bourbon Street? Did the city of New Orleans have prevented this terrorist attack on Bourbon Street?
Well, you know, there's already been one lawsuit that's been filed. There are going to be files, as I understand it, and I'm sure there'll be many more. You know, those will be, you know, judicial decisions coming out of, you know, those lawsuits. You know, it's unfortunate, of course, because we don't, we don't have time given, you know, other events coming up here. We don't have time to kind of take weeks off and, and do not right now because we've got to continue to make our city as safe and profitable. There are some really concerning questions that at least I have, based upon what the media accounts have been over the last week. I mean, everything from, uh, you know, what, what's happened in twenty seventeen? We received forty million dollars to upgrade our security in the Quarter. Where did that money go? What was it used for? You know, all the way to what, what, um, what operational things were in the works at the time of New Year's? I mean, I heard today in the media that apparently the contract for the new bollards that were supposed to be on Bourbon Street was, was signed in November of twenty-four. They weren't supposed to be, uh, delivered until, you know, early February of, of this coming, of this year right now. I, I mean, I don't quite understand that. If you knew you had a huge event like the Sugar Bowl coming here and other events before that, I mean, you had Bayou Classic, uh, you had, you had the New Orleans Bowl, you had other major events with tourism, you know, coming in a big way. Why did we not start this process much earlier? And again, I don't want to suggest that it was only Bourbon Street because, look, this, this was a terrorist who was designed to kill people. And it could have happened anywhere. It could have happened on Canal Street. It could have happened anywhere in the city. But, you know, the responsibility of those, um, in charge is to keep a, I think, that community safe. And, you know, it's just kind of hard to understand, uh, you know, how there was a lapse where a big truck like that could make a right turn on Canal, first of all. Second, why we, you know, did not have the bollards in place earlier. And third, and this came up over the last few days here, is the bollards that apparently have been ordered, you know, are about one tenth of apparently what's needed to stop a truck of what this guy Jabar was driving.
Yeah, they changed the...
That decision, why was that decision made? Was it financial? Was it operational? So there's just so many questions and I, I commend, you know, all of the investigations. As best as I can tell, there's like three investigations, you know, that are going to take place. One by the council and the state, one by Liz Merle, the attorney general for Louisiana, and another idea, something under Thomas is doing his own, uh, you know, fact seeking here in later this week. I mean, all of that is good and we need to get to the facts. And then we need to make sure that a solid plan is put in place that this can never happen again.
Arnie Filco's with us, former New Orleans City Council President. Yeah, Arnie, I, I, I'm like torn on this. I mean, I definitely think the city's dysfunctional, once-a-week garbage pickup, blinking red lights, things like that that are just sort of accepted as normal. There's a lot of dysfunction. And I'm not saying that, uh, the timing for the Super Bowl thing is terrible, you know? It should have been finishing these projects by, by last summer, like you said, before the Saints season, before Bayou Classic and New Orleans Bowl and the Sugar Bowl and Taylor Swift. So this stuff isn't going on, you're in the Quarter for Sugar Bowl and there's road and street and sidewalk construction going on at a large level. It's just like, you know, any other city would have done, had this done six months ago. But then the flip side, it's like, thank God Governor Jeff Landry, you know, fought to do it. Because the mayor wasn't, the city council wasn't, the city of New Orleans wasn't, or whatever they had planned was much smaller scale and, you know, very late in the game.
Well, that, that's true. I mean, you would have thought with all of what we have, and let's be honest, in New Orleans, we have major events every week. You know, you talked about the Saints season. I mean, you have seventy-five... Coming into that dull, many of which are visiting fans, which are in the French Quarter. I, I mean, I understand Super Bowl, that's a significant event, but we have a lot of significant events in New Orleans. And, and really, I'm not trying to, and I don't, I don't like people politicizing and casting blame, okay? I mean, I'm not into that. I'm into, you know, resolving things and figuring things out and making them better. But we've got to be able to figure out what happened here and why, you know, where the weaknesses were and why. And then make sure that, um, whether it be through federal guidance, as Mayor Cantrell has asked for now, or, or, you know, we received, um, uh, from Mardi Gras, we received a level-one protection today from the federal government, just like Super Bowl. I mean, all of that is good, but, but we got to make sure that all of the parties are together, municipal, state, and federal, you know, making sure that we can keep, you know, our city as safe as possible. And that's one more thing, Corey, is that, like, in, in the world we live in today, there's no a hundred percent guarantees of anything. I mean, you have people that desire to, to, you know, to kill Americans and to, to change our way of life. All we can do is do the best we can and, you know, and I think, you know, that's what citizens demand. And it's important that our elected official, our law enforcement, our, just our regular citizens, our media as well, you know, we come together if that's the possible answer to those questions.
I thought there was some irresponsible, uh, journalism going on by some media members. I think some politicians were saying some things that were selfish and self-serving. Very, you know, political party-aligned type of stuff. And, uh, I just thought it was uncalled for, like I said, irresponsible. And this bollards thing, uh, I think is, is a little over the top. I mean, if, if the barrier would have been up at Canal Street, if the bollards were in place at Iberville, an F-150 at eighty inches wide could have passed on the sidewalk on both corners, on, on the left at Canal and on the right at Iberville. I was down there today, had a, literally a tape measure in my hand, measuring the distance and figuring out how wide an F-150 Lightning truck is. I want to talk about that when we come back, Arnie. Irresponsible journalists, irresponsible politicians. Arnie Filco's with us on a Monday, coming right back.
Ladies and gentlemen, in this walk-on mode of complex, something called, quickly. Tires, wheel alignments, struts, servicing your transmission. We're doing all makes and models. It doesn't have been purchased from us. It's for you and your lifestyle with your budget. We want to get you in and out as quick as possible. Quick lane, you got to see it. You have a lovely experience right there at Woodhouse... Street cuisine, the Oak Tree, Lebanon's Cafe. Some of the city's finest lamb chops and shish kebab. Carrotton at Jeanette by the Streetcar Barn, Lebanon's Cafe.
The Woodhouse Days Bar, five area locations, New Orleans, Beverly, Slidewell, Baton Rouge, and now... A day of relaxation is just moments away at the Woodhouse Days Bar. Thewoodhousebar.com.
For Lidenheimer Baking Company, producing the perfect French bread is more than a privilege. It's a sacred mission. And for five generations, they've used the same time-honored process, baking their signature loaf with its crisp crust and delicate center. And still good to the last crumb from the finest French Quarter restaurant. A local bakery shop over twenty-five years, New Orleans-owned, Lidenheimer.
USA Today ranked the top ten restaurants in New Orleans restaurants to travel. He hits his own eighties, made the list. USA Today says Scott Craig is chef of the game. Much loved, real Italian food, draws lots of visitors, but much more than a gift. A little inspired, local's property, and New York's entire hospitality doors. They're repeated tires, it's...
For game-changing innovation, look to the Laitra family of companies located in Harrahham. Intralox, a later company, changed the game when they invented modular plastic conveyor belts over forty years ago. These belts and innovative Intralox technology are transforming movement in manufacturing facilities around the world. Intralox is a global company now hiring in production, warehousing, shipping, and more. If you want to be part of our successful team, visit laitra.com. That's L-A-I-T-R-A-M dot com.
Come experience the best smoothies in the metro. Being a father has been a unique franchise in decades. Leaking. Stay somewhere special, you're visiting. And the Grand Victoria, located in the Garden District of St. Charles Avenue Streetcar Barn. The Grand Victoria is an ideal place for visiting the city's local attractions, fabulous restaurants, shops, and more.
Francesca's Deli and Pizzeria has a specialty sandwich, a calorie, ten ounce burger, and some of the best pizza in New Orleans. Francesca's Deli and Pizzeria on Harrison Avenue, Lakeview between Canal Boulevard and West End. Changing talk radio in New Orleans for the better. It's Corey Johnson on the neutral ground. Every weekday afternoon on Coast Channel Four and Central Channel Three Thirty-Three from fourteen to five thirty.
Speaking of talk radio, Arnie Filco's got a talk radio program down the aisle. What's that all about, Arnie?
Uh, that's nice. You probably, I have a show with my friend Kerry Grant, who is in City Hall with me, uh, on Thursdays on WBOK, which is twelve thirty AM. We, we talk news, politics, sports, and we have a good time. Uh, so thank you for letting me plug that a little bit and we'd love to, love to have your callers once we get off of your show, shift over to twelve thirty and they can have another hour of good radio.
It's six to seven on Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursdays?
That's right.
That's all right, Arnie Filco, check it out. Uh, Arnie, we were talking about, um, the terrorist attack on Bourbon Street and I was getting into something specific. First off, a lot of disappointment in politicians. I mean, Oliver Thomas brings up on CNN, uh, Vietnamese shop owner who was murdered out in the east, which I'm not, I don't want to downplay that. I want folks to remember her and that store and this woman and her family run the store and the patriarch was killed, but why inject that on this CNN interview that's about this terrorist attack? I always say, oh, God, New Orleans is murdering shop owners, you know, it's just a violent city. And then I thought Billy Nung guesser with the Bollards was a little over the top. I thought, uh, I don't even know who this guy is, honestly. Maybe you do this, it's from New Orleans, apparently. I think most New Orleanians have no idea who he is. I don't know how he ascended like to Fox all of a sudden, but he's on Fox News. He kind of looks like Pete Lee Herman, uh, and he was just, you know, Kirkpatrick didn't know about these, uh, temporary, um, archers, those big yellow things they brought into the quarter. And, uh, it's like, it's probably a lot of stuff that the police chief doesn't know that's in the city of New Orleans warehouse, warehouses. I'm sure there's a lot of stuff, but all this I thought was over the top of, you know, a police cruiser could have blocked the sidewalk if that was what they were thinking. No one talked about blocking the sidewalk. No one talked about a single Bollard on the sidewalk blocking the vehicle like the street. I mean, these Bollards were to keep vehicular traffic off of pedestrian mall Bourbon Street when it became a pedestrian mall, nothing more. It wasn't some hardened, uh, terrorist proof blockade, otherwise there would have been one in the middle of the block in between Canal and Iberville on Bourbon and, you know, le- layers of it, and, and there will be now layers of it. But I just thought a lot of irresponsible political talk and some members of the media apparently just fixated on the Bollards and not understanding the barriers of the Bollards and where they are and what they do.
Yeah, and I think, I think there would have, you know, unfortunately, we, we know well in New Orleans that there's almost an industry involving the politics of, of tragedy. We saw that in Katrina, you know, when you had different elements of our government casting blame in each other and accusing each other. So I, it happened here as well. I mean, it was hard to watch in many ways at press conference on New Year's Day, um, some of the comments that were made, you know, by, you know, by one of our senators, for example, I just saw was completely irresponsible and ridiculous and made us look foolish. I got calls around the country saying, what, what are you all doing in Louisiana? Uh, you know, you had, you had.
With that, 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 no, I know, you're talking about. You're talking about Troy Carter with the, uh, murder capital of the world comment over here.
Yeah, you had, you had one of our local, uh, uh, officials here, you know, before they got in and talked about terrorism that, you know, you know, we, we were in the past, we were the murder capital of the world. Well, why do you need to say that? That just reinforces another decade of New Orleans. So, um, again, I, you know, it, it's, we need to focus on what's important here. This is not about national politics here, it's not about the new president coming in. It should be about keeping a community safe. That is the only thing that we should be focusing on. And, you know, and unfortunately we go off on, a lot of folks go off on tangents here and it really hurts us. And of course the national, Corey, as you know, you know, even more so than local media, national media wants to have controversy wherever they can find it.
Yep.
And, you know, and when Fox or CNN or MSNBC or somebody comes down here, if there's something, somebody says that creates controversy, of course, that becomes the national and now our world, the international story, and that's not good for our community.
No, I don't think it's good for the community. And, and I, I, a lot of it's just factually incorrect, uh, you know, um.
I, I mean, that, that, you know, that story that originated early on about the, you know, about the truck coming from the border and crossing the border and, you know, had it had been involved in transporting human people, uh, for prostitution. None of that happened. I mean, it was just, you know, just a myth in order to satisfy, uh, you know, a, a, a particular, uh, idea that somebody wanted to put forward. So those are the kind of things that don't help and, you know, I hope through these commissions that are being created, uh, that, that they will act unified, and by the way, not independent, without the politics, that they will act unified, they will act quickly and we can come to some conclusions as to what went wrong and how we can do better going into the very near future because we, we don't have a lot of time to sit on this.
So, Arnie, uh, if the barriers up and the Bollards are in place, a vehicle could go around them easily, so it still could happen. If the Bollards are in place and the barriers up and it's even hardened where it's anti-terrorist, I mean, I hate to say this, any North American city that's having like a Super Bowl or Sugar Bowl or bowl game or Taylor Swift concert, any major concert, NBA, we have thousands of people ascending into one area, some jerk can jump the curb in a Ford Dodge, whatever truck and, and run over a bunch of people. It's, you can't harden everywhere.
You, you can't unless you want to change civil society in America and I don't think that's what we'd want to do. It, it, look, we're not, you know, New Orleans could have been used in Atlanta, Memphis, Charlotte, you pick the city in America, that the crazy person, the terrorist who had been radicalized could have struck. Uh, you know, we saw it over the holidays in Germany. I mean, that similar situation in a German city at the Christmas market where a guy in a truck had been radicalized and did the same thing. So, you know, it's unfortunate because, you know, the, the low war has become even more dangerous in some ways than the, the, you know, the more organized efforts that are maybe a little bit easier to uncover. It's very hard when somebody has the, the intent to kill and, and, and has the motivation to do so. I mean, it's very hard to, you know, to, to stop that, but, but it doesn't mean that we can't tighten it up, we can't harden it. Uh, and I think that is what the community has to do, that's the responsibility of, of our mayor, our council, our, our police department and all the people to figure out what occurred here, how, what the confusion may have been and to correct it as soon as possible.
No, and Bourbon Street's an easy street to harden from a vehicle doing what it did. So that, that, that can easily be done with the tight streets, historic buildings, Bollards, barriers. Just got to do it right. Just can't protect everywhere. Uh, Arnie, real quick, um, look, New Orleans has a lot of dysfunction. We mentioned it when we started. And Kirkpatrick's like a breath of fresh air. We, we got one of the sharpest declines in violent crime in America. We're finally getting, you know, clearing the hurdle of that violent crime, putting that behind us. And, uh, a lot of the media, they want to pounce on Ann Kirkpatrick, like not knowing where these archers were, didn't know they existed, uh, the police chief allowing this, I've been just, this allowing this to happen concept. I just think it's, uh, over the top and fire Ann Kirkpatrick, I think would be a going backwards move.
Yeah, I, I was pretty, I saw the report on Fox. Uh, I, I was also upset by that. I mean, you know, so I, I'm not going to say that our police chief is perfect or great. I, I think she's done a yelping job here over the last year plus, you know, bringing our crime number down. I, I think her president, Michelle Woodford, did an excellent job as well. You know, this is not the time to, to do this, uh, you know, we got to work on remedies here, not work on, you know, trying to get people's lives. I mean, we're going to have a new mayor in place here this fall, so that mayor will have a major decision to make as to who he or she wants as, as our police chief. Change the current police chief. But now is not the time. Now is the time to just figure out what the weaknesses were and, and resolve it and, and not to play politics with this. That's, uh, we're doing, if we do that, we're doing a real disservice to the families, um, of the deceased and those that are injured. We should not do that. Our, we are a better city than that and we should not in any way be doing that right now.
Hey, Arnie, we got about thirty seconds. Final question for you, totally different topic. High school stadium, how's that coming?
Going well. Um, we hope to break ground in the spring. We really would like, we break that million, we're still trying to get to the two, twelve billion number. We have a couple of good prospects I hope to hear from in the next two weeks and, you know, can't wait to build this thing. It's going to be so exciting for the Knights Board and the entire city of New Orleans and all of our youth. So very excited and anyone listening, if you want anything, we got it for you. It'd be a good, uh, return on the debt.
No doubt. That's great. So much a pleasure.
Thanks, Corey. You take care, be well.
That's Arnie Filco, former New Orleans City Council President, joining us on the program. He's going to decide in a few weeks if he's going to run for city council, District A, if he's going to run for council. In a, in about a week or two, he'll have a decision, yes or no. I certainly hope he runs, huh? I certainly hope he runs. Yes, we need that. Corey Johnson with you on eight Monday afternoon, forty-five degrees. It's cold out there, bundle up.
From the owners of Katie's in Mid-City and the end of New in Harrahann and Old School Deli, we're going to do a dozen specialty sandwiches. Francesca's Deli and Pizzeria on Harrison Avenue, Lakeview between Canal Boulevard and West End. Francesca's Deli and Pizzeria. Come experience the best smoothies in the metro area. The biggest father of food in Smoothie King, James T. Dickson, on Jefferson Highway, it 's off the march, on E. Conne Highway, go off by Clausway. Smoothie King.
Why wear the same old glasses when answering the phone? Find out from the crowd, come to Art and Eyes. Art and Eyes is not the same old eyeglasses anymore. It's one of the finest eyewear shops in the country. Have white hair in New Orleans and a precision engineered collection of accessories and gorgeous eyewear from the heart of Europe, Japan and the United States. Our products are thoughtfully jointed and our staff are here to help you find exactly the right size magazine as you need, as you need. The Woodhouse Days Bar, calling of area locations, New Orleans, New Orleans. The day of relaxation is just moments away at the Woodhouse Days Bar, woodhousebar.com.
Rousas Market is hiring. With full-time employment and flexible scheduling, Rousas has a job for you, or maybe even a career. Apply at any Rousas store or. Would actually last a lifetime, not much, but it helped me get something guaranteed lasting life. With Regal Select, this main driver won off his way as a working technology, food application and all their ability. Help. For our kids, we love our city. Better for a better future. Hardest of our resources, NOLA College will create a safer, prosperous city for all at risk. What's needed to help reduce violence and invest in our children is to create a rational change. Join now at nola.com. The port of New Orleans is the gateway to global commerce and the economic engine that brings Louisiana and our country forward. Travel each and every day by river, rail and by road. It all happens right here, delivering Louisiana's future at the port of New Orleans, your work river. Learn more about your port of New Orleans, visit portnola.com. Outdoor dining, eastern cuisine, under the Oak Tree, Lebanon's Cafe, some of the city's finest lamb chops in Shishkabah, Carrollton and Jeanette by the Street Car Barn, Lebanon's Cafe. Tired of cleaning your gutters? Only with Leaf Guard Gutters. And you'll never have to clean your gutters again, ever again, to your. Urban Gutters install Leaf Guard Gutters. Say, you're a right value here. And right now is the perfect time entering Urban Gutters Nightingale Installation Sale on Thursday. You're in the morning now. Did that gutters? Get on the phone. Get on it, get on your gutters. It's cool. You're a cool spot.
Game changing innovation, look to the Latrum family, located in Harrahann, Interlocks and Latrum Company changed the game when they invented modular plastic air belts over forty years ago. These belts and innovative Interlocks technology are transforming the manufacturing facilities around the world. Interlocks is a dynamic global company now firing in production, warehousing, shipping and more. If you want to be part of our success team, visit latrum.com. That's L-A-I-T-R-A-N.
It's all young, on the neutral ground. Say anything you please about me, but don't say anything bad about Crew Bowl. Tell me, boy. Good body. That, that is pretty darn exciting. Say anything you want about it. Say anything you stand to, about all the boy. Open it, boy. It is forty-four degrees with the wind chill, it's in the thirties. I want my mommy, that's kind of cold. Uh, Cory. Swagging and picking me up out back. I'm not going to do the. It's cold. It's a little cold. And you better be prepared to deal with it for about the next week, week and a half. Lots of thirties, forties the next week, week and a half straight in New Orleans, the metro area. So dress properly. Like this morning I was out in this windy stuff. This morning it was much more windy than it is now and it was kind of overcast, just cold. And, uh, you know, I layered up lots of layers. It's like a haircut. You know, you can always take more off as long as you don't cut too much. So never cut too much. You can always take layers off and add them once you're, you know, out there, you didn't, unless you bring them with you. But what's the point? You know, I mean, you just peel off a layer or two, layering up. I don't know how we did it, bro. You really didn't have to deal with it too much, Corporal, but, uh, some folks in the United States of America strictly use like cotton layers, which that's not working as well as like these, you know, kind of polyester fabrics that rip and hold in heat or yet still breathe and roll, you know, roll and things like that. And then, you know, we didn't have a lot of good wind breaking material unless you were like a, you know, raincoat type of thing. So a lot of the, you know, like roll of cotton back in the olden days, the wind would go right through that anyway. You know, a lot better products, thinner, insulate better, all that good stuff. Anyway, if you missed the four o'clock hour, you missed a lot. Former New Orleans City Council President, Arnie Filco joined us on the program. He might run again for council. It would be District A. I'd love to see it, huh? Are you kidding me? Someone who's civic minded, that's honest, that'll hold people accountable, that'll call out shenanigans, not going to take a bribe, not going to take a payoff, not interested in enriching himself, wants to enrich us, the citizens. Make New Orleans citizens potentially, believes in New Orleans, believes in us, sick of the butts. It's a great city, but the traffic lights don't work. It's a great city, but you only get garbage pickup once a week. Love Arnie Filco to run, are you kidding me? I went down to Bourbon and Canal earlier today. I went down to Bourbon and Iberville earlier today. The memorial of flowers and folks taking like paint pens, the little. It's a great city, but you only get garbage pickup once a week. Love Arnie Philco to run, are you kidding me? I went down to Bourbon and Canal earlier today. I went down to Bourbon and Iberville earlier today. The memorial of flowers and folks taking like paint pens, the little paint pens that are just like a Sharpie but paint and writing messages or using a Sharpie, writing messages on this French Quarter building wall for the fourteen victims of this terror attack. Keeping people in their thoughts and prayers, flowers. Halfway up the block, lots of camera crews, international camera crews set up on the Indian neutral ground, set up on the, in like the parking slot on Canal Street with their tripod and camera photog and report. I went out there, if you. Corey Johnson, you can check out just a little video of the memorial that's set up there. At the end of that first video of three, first one's the memorial. At the end of that video, you can see that, that barrier with that flap that comes up about two, three feet in the air, that blockade, that barrier in the street. I went out there with a tape measure. Second video, I am measuring from the wall of the building across the sidewalk to where that barrier starts in the street. A Ford F-150 Lightning is eighty inches wide. That space was a hundred and eight inches wide, easily with the barrier up, walking the street. The Ford F-150 Lightning couldn't have gone around the barrier. On the left side of the sidewalk, the left side of the street at Canal and Bourbon. The following block, Bourbon at Iberville, where the four bollards would go, measuring from the fourth one to the building on the right. I guess that's Felix's. A vehicle, it's even wider, about twelve feet from the bollard to the building. An even bigger vehicle could go through there, much less an F-150 Lightning. Three things why this terrorist picked the F-150 Lightning, in my opinion. Thought this out. First off, it's a truck. Lot of damage hitting people, obviously. Second, it's an F-150 Ford Lightning. It's an electric truck with full motors. It, it's got nearly double the torque of a Corvette, of a twenty-twenty-five Corvette, like four hundred and fifty pounds of torque. The, the Lightning's like nearly eight hundred pounds of torque. Zero to sixty, like three and a half seconds, under four seconds. And then the final thing, it's an electric truck, batteries. About two thousand pounds, about a ton, a ton heavier than a standard F-150 pickup truck with a internal combustion motor and transmission. So a truck, big, wide, heavy truck, ridiculously fast, like a Leoni, like a Ferrari fast. Lot of torque and power and heavy, heavier than a regular truck. What's that, Blue Boy? Lot of irresponsible journalism on this and politicians, you're right. Pee-wee Herman, so Fox News all the time, always scouting off. You gotta take measure like me, go measure things before you scout off. Coming right back before it's five o'clock, hour, hour, next.
On the neutral ground, Corey Johnson, on TV on Fox Channel Four and Laitram Channel Three Thirty. It's all mutual. On radio, ninety-three mile FM, coming to West LA, New Orleans.
It's five PM.
The Woodhouse Day Spa, front of the area locations, New Orleans, Metairie, Slidown, Baton Rouge, and now Mandeville. A day's relaxation is just moments away at the Woodhouse Day Spa, woodhousespa.com.
For game changing innovation, look to the Laitram family of companies located in Harrahann. Interlocks, a Laitram company, change a game when they invented modular plastic bear belts over forty. Innovative Interlocks technology are transforming movement and manufacturing facilities around the world. Interlocks is a dynamic global company now hiring in. Warehousing, shipping, and more. If you want to be part of our successful community, visit laitram.com. That's L.A.I.T.R.A.M.com.
Agency Auto, Auto Business, probably four five. I am this agency dot com, didn't get insurance agents. Auto Business, probably four five six, you're in, I'm Dave, I am this agency dot com.
Here at the NOLA Coalition, we love our kids, we love our students. And people are standing together for a better future. Hardest of our resources, NOLA Coalition will create a prosperous city for all residents. There's more than. Invest in our children, drive generational change. Join now at NOLA Coalition.
For decades on Jefferson Highway, across. Way of the bar, across Smoothie King. Smoothie King, it's new cool. He has a C dot com. Your cool spots.
Hi, this is Joey El. My dad, Bunky, I'm Evan Fisher, official of a locally family owned store serving the residential commercial pain needs of New Orleans. My dad would be proud of today's Hell Pain decorating, and here's why. We have the best technical staff in the business, providing the best color matching service in southeast Louisiana. Perfect matching for any color and any brand. Mental safety, want to save those old cans, Hell Pain offers three two-hour delivery. Our store decorators will assist you on deciding what color and type of paint to best showcase your home. Importantly, as your local independent furniture dealer, our products provide the greatest value in the painting industry. Superior coverage and Benjamin Moore Paint simply covers better and lasts. Hell Pain Decorating. Visit any of our six locations, or online at hellpain.com.
Hey, New Orleans, if you've ever wanted to experience life on St. Charles Avenue, now is your chance. The Grand Victorian, the ultimate bed breakfast in. Eighteen ninety-three, this magnificent. Special Weekend Getaway special. To find out more, go to GBBB dot com. That's GBBB dot com. The Grand Victorian, where the locals go to get away.
Why wear the same old glasses that everyone else is wearing? Stand out from the crowd, come to Art and Eyes. Art and Eyes is not your typical eyeglasses store. It's one of the finest eyewear shops in the country, right here in New Orleans. With precision engineered prescription lenses and gorgeous. Europe, Japan, and the United States. Our products are thoughtfully curated and our staff are here to help you find exactly the right frames. Art and Eyes on magazine as unique as you.
All that makes it happen is one goal, everybody having a great experience at Hell Pain. We should be known for a reason, because we're good. How many of you have had anything to do with all of them?
Five generations, family owned and operated, Leydenheimer French Bread.
Rousas, Royal grocery store. Rousas has the only full-service grocery stores, both in the French Quarter on Royal Street and in the CBD on Barone in the old Sewell Cadillac Building. The Rousas on Rooker, Chapatoulis at Napoleon is in a century-old warehouse. And uptown on Corret at the Colo of Balance is Rousas' all new boutique store. There are seven locations in all means parish. Rousas is New Orleans grocery store. Rousas Market tastes like home.
Pretty amazing last night. By nine thirty, ten o'clock, it was like seventy second. I came in by like five in the morning, it was thirty-five degrees. Around like a forty. Try all point of view, it's just warm. What the hell are we doing having a forty degree temperature drop? This isn't Denver. From pretty much like low seventies to mid thirties. From about ten eleven last night to about five AM. It's super quick. That would have been crazy during the day and not overnight, Corporal. Like eleven AM, it's seventy-five and then at six o'clock at night, it's thirty-five. That'd be a weird day, there'd be a lot of people in shorts driving home very cold from the day at work. Anyway, a forty degree temperature drop. We peaked out around forty-four, forty-five degrees, we'll dip back into thirties overnight. Triple P. Protect the pets, plants, pipes. Protect those pets already, come on. Are you kidding? Especially on the North Shore. Especially on the North Shore. There are lots of thirties and forties for like the next week to ten days. Most mornings we will start in the mid to high thirties on the South Shore. That means many mornings over the next week, we're gonna have to be in the high twenties, around freezing to start your day on the North Shore. And then we only peak out like in the forties most days. South Shore, we might get into the low fifties. I'm talking like the next week, week and a half, like seven to ten days. Kind of a lot of rinse and repeat of what we're experiencing right now. Speaking of the North Shore, Corporal, they should be a sponsor of this program, by golly, because I talk about them so much. I, my brothers in from London, dragged my brother, my other brother lives here, my mom. We went to Gallagher's five twenty-seven in Mandeville, just ridiculous. I got a cup of gumbo to start. Then I ate about seventy percent of a crab meat St. Francis appetizer. I didn't get mine, giving my mom a big scoop of it, but then my brother requested a scoop, like, order your own. I tightened him up. So cup of gumbo, which is outstanding at Gallagher's, full of shrimp and crab meat, just great gumbo, flavorful as hell. That crab at St. Francis, the Warren LaRue recipe. I got a little petite filet sizzling in potter as an entree, just a small one, like the woman's steak. And then we had some sweet potato casserole side, merloton on the side. Oh, I forgot about the crab appetizer for the table, I had some of that. Just outstanding, so damn good. Keen pie for dessert, what was the other dessert? Keen pie, oh, and a creme brulee, which was fabulous. No, ridiculous dinner. Glass of pinot or two from Oregon. Styling and profiling. I'm not, honestly, I swear, I'm not saying it like I'm styling and profiling, look at me, I'm on social media, look at my. I'm telling you, because you need to get to Gallagher's and enjoy a ridiculously good meal at this Mandeville restaurant. Off the charts good. One of my new favorites. You know, I was joking, Corporal, I told somebody the other day, I said, I laughed. I said, because it, it's sort of pathetic in a way, but it is, you know, it's the facts. I don't know about top ten, maybe definitely top twenty for me, favorite restaurant in metro New Orleans in my top twenty. Houston's on St. Charles Avenue. Which, you know, it's like, Corey, it's a chain, dude, you're in restaurant rich New Orleans and you're gonna say Houston's? Yeah. It's just very, very good in what they do. It's expensive, it's not cheap, it's, it's a little high priced, but everything they have is very, very good, high quality and. Same thing every time, a super high quality level, they can pay for it, it's expensive, like I said. Anyway, just a couple of restaurants, I thought I'd mention that aren't media or advertisers or clients. I thought it'd be expensive. Allen Brothers, a purveyor out of Chicago, their prime filet and sometimes they'll have a prime New York strip special. At Houston's, it's as good steak as you get anywhere. Isn't it crazy? I'll tell you what's crazy, Young's Dry Cleaning, eighty-five years now. Eighty-five years, the New Orleans institution, since. The United States got into World War Two, always taking care of New Orleansians and their dry cleaning. Walk-up location, free pickup and delivery, manless locker locations spread out all over the metro. To find out more, youngsdrycleaning.com. Youngsdrycleaning.com. Forty-five degrees was a high, temperatures up at forty-three going down. Another overnight chill, it's gonna be cold. I checked the plants, the pipes, most importantly, the pets, the outdoor pets. I got my garage, got a couple of heaters going, so Puffy, the outdoor cat can chill in there or heat up in there. Probably like fifteen degrees in that, in that garage instead of thirty-five and that no wind chill. Wind chill right now is in the thirties in the metro. That's why I started the program, this five o'clock hour, I'm calling my mommy. She's coming in the station wagon and she's gonna come pick me up out back at the studio, because I wanna go home, it's cold. I did go down to Bourbon and Canal Street, Bourbon and Iberville today with a measure. From the wall to the barrier that was down at Canal and Iberville, excuse me, Canal and Bourbon. The, the barrier that was down, from the edge of the barrier to the wall, one hundred and eight inches or, or about nine feet wide. A Ford F-150 Lightning is less than seven feet wide. Would have a foot on either side to jump the curb and go up on the sidewalk exactly like the F-150 did. If the barrier's up or down. And the very next corner, where the bollards are, or supposed to be, Bourbon at Iberville. The F-150 Lightning had even more room to go to the right by Felix's, I guess, and jump the curb and go in that direction down Bourbon. So full activation of every bollard, full activation of the barrier with the big metal plate that flops up or down. Clearly, an F-150 Lightning truck could have gone down the side sidewalk like it did on Canal Street around the police SUV, could have continued and gone around the barrier that was down. And on the very next block, easily could have passed at Felix's. And because this guy, this terrorist Jabbar, scouted out the French Quarter, scouted out Bourbon Street. I mean, if the blockade was up, if there were bollards on the sidewalk, that solves the problem. That will be the future, by the way. There'll be four bollards on the street and there'll be one on each end of that on the sidewalk. On every block from Bourbon to Espalade, in between Canal and Espalade on Bourbon. Every side street will have that on both directions. Even if all of that was up, the guy scouted the city, he'd find another spot. Hey, the Sugar Bowl game, thousands of George and Notre Dame fans, tens of thousands heading into the dome on Prodigy's. Now, the, the criticism, the irresponsible criticism, some political dogs dogging the barrier thing and then this guy, especially with Fox, this Pee-wee Herman guy, Arroyo or whatever, and supposedly from New Orleans, no New Orleansians know who the guy is. Just pops up on Fox, kind of like Tyrus, it's like, how is this guy a New Orleanian, what? I live in New Orleans, I, I've never seen the guy before. But the Pee-wee Herman guy was the mayor, the mayor should resign. Police chief should resign. Didn't know about these archers, all that. These archers are just big, heavy. Meant to be hooked together by a cable to plane. You could use them on sidewalk, you could put a police cruiser, you could put anything heavy, any heavy object and block the sidewalk. When the police chief was like, I didn't know they even existed, that's like a negative. You know how many city assets the police chief doesn't know the city has? And the mayor, the council, and the citizenry, how many where he has? It's not the point. It was never hard for a terrorist to attack. The bollards, the blockade was simply to make Bourbon a pedestrian role. Overreaction and irresponsible by some politicians and some media on this. New Orleans really was not at fault, could have happened anywhere.
Custom plantations in the city, it's a looking value of your home. At Hell Pain Decorating, we're proud to offer custom plantations now, winter shutters, candy. Hard trains, French doors, sliding doors, you know, just American Indian, that's a three hundred available. Large trains, French doors, sliding doors, you know, just American Indian, that's a three hundred available. Many colors to match your holiday, with color measures, you will see fast delivery, plus they're virtually maintenance-free. Hellbait, Benjamin Moore, let us to you in the right direction.
Young's Dry Cleaning. With two walk-up locations, Young's on Claiborne and Young's on Harrison Avenue in Lakeview. Young's Dry Cleaning. Call two-eight-eight-eight-three-eight-one or online at youngsdrycleaning.com. The port of New Orleans is the gateway to global commerce. Twenty-five years, Fort Nola has continued to deliver the goods we use each and every day. By river, rail, and by road. No matter what, it all happens right here. Delivering Louisiana's future at the port of New Orleans, your... Your port of New Orleans, visit fort.com. Rousset's Market is hiring. Sixty-five stores for overtime employment, like flexible scheduling. Rousset's has a job for you, or maybe even a career. Apply at any Rousset's store or online at roussetts.com. There's a Middle Eastern restaurant that's less than five minutes from where Causeway and River Road, Lebanon's Cafe. Convenient to Old Metairie and Old Jefferson, Carrollton and Jeanette on the streetcar line, Lebanon's Cafe.
The Woodhouse Inn spa with five air locations, the women's Metairie, Slidell, and now Mandeville. A den of relaxation is just moments away at the Woodhouse Inn spa.
On magazine, there's no better sports stadium in the entire city. Tracy's is inside of a one-hundred-year-old building with literally dozens and dozens of flat-screen TVs, including a one-hundred-twenty-inch boy and tab when it's time to check out your favorite teams. Make it Tracy's, a magazine at... Louisiana, legendary Tracy's in the Garden District. Make it insurance agency, auto, home, blood, business, five four five five six zero eight zero, D V I N S Agency dot com. Make it insurance agency, auto, home, blood, business, five four five five six zero eight zero, D V I N S Agency dot... We live to eat.
More is better. Scott, that is our slogan, more is better. We love everything. That's just more food, more smiles, more flow, more, more, more. We'll do something. More, more, more.
The Katie's Restaurant in Mid-City. Here at the Nola Coalition, we love our kids and we love our cities. The people of New Orleans are standing together for a better future. Part of our blessed resources, the Nola Coalition will create a safer, prosperous city for all. Here's what we do, we do violence, invest in our children, drive to original change. Join now at Nola Coalition, they got me from. Ladies and gentlemen, in this world of progress, there's something called white flesh. Towers, real warmers, you know, starts servicing your transmission, we do it all, it's a mob, it's a... It's for you, it's for your lifestyle, it's for your budget anymore. You know, it's possible, you gotta understand, you've got a long, you've got a long... Right there, when you move on, it's a... This is tomorrow's talk radio today. Corey Johnson.
Hey, this is your newspaper.
Precisely. I'm looking for the head of the Times, you know, you're Louisiana, that's... And live streaming at correytalks.com. Yeah, you write Crescent City and beyond, Corey Johnson back at you on a Monday. Thanks so much for joining, it's cold, cool. Got to slip back into the thirties, rinse and repeat for like the next week, week and a half, lots of thirties and forties, maybe some fifties. Gonna be cold for the next ten days in metro New Orleans, bundle up. And I mean, like, get out the scarf, the gloves, the knit hat, all that stuff, the big coat. Get the big coat out, layer up, it's cold out there. If you need a pair of prescription glasses, prescription eyewear, or a great pair of sunglasses. Art and Eyes on Magazine. It's not just some eyewear shop, it's an eyewear boutique, something you'd find like in San Francisco or New York. Has to be one of the finest eyewear boutiques in the country. And I'm not kidding. When you walk in and you see the shop, when you touch, feel, put on the glasses, you're gonna agree with what I'm talking about. Great place, incredible selection, name brands you've never, ever heard of, never heard of. High-quality, the best in the world, from Europe, from Japan, from the United States. All price points from a few hundred bucks to over a thousand dollars. The finest eyewear anywhere. Art and Eyes on Magazine, Google it. Art and Eyes on Magazine, eyewear that's as unique as you. You know, I've been wearing glasses for like forty-something years. Forty-four years, I get a new prescription, I go out of the mall, I go to one of these, you know, Luxottica shops, Luxottico shops, and I buy something everybody else has, some crap made in China. There's no more Revo or Prussol or Ray-Ban that you knew. Those same brands may still exist, but the Revo, made in Italy, the Ray-Ban made in the United... All Luxottica crap from China. Don't get fooled by that stuff. I used to love Revo and Prussol and, and Ray-Ban, high-quality, lifetime purchase if you're not careful. Last years and years, a decade or more. Not anymore, that stuff's just terrible. Art and Eyes on Magazine. I went down to Bourbon and Canal today. I went Bourbon and Iberville, Ground Zero. This, the barrier thing and the bollard thing is just ridiculously overplayed. People that don't know what they're talking about, thinking all the same, they're all different. If the barrier were activated and the bollards were in place, the barrier at Canal Street and Bourbon, the bollards at Bourbon and Iberville, a Ford F-150 Lightning could've gone around them. Just like it did at Canal around the SUV. You know, PD SUV is wide as that barrier, simply went around, there's more than enough space. So, the future is, is obvious. I mean, first off, the city ordering these inferior bollards. I think the feds are gonna step in and they're gonna go from the city buying the cheapest, most inexpensive ones that aren't really terrorist-proof. The right vehicle, the right size, the right speed can break through them. Now, we're gonna get the best available, and the setup's simple. It's like layering. It's gonna be four in the street at Bourbon and Canal, and then one in each sidewalk, so a vehicle can't go down the sidewalk. And then I would imagine about halfway down the block, the first block on Bourbon, in between Canal and Iberville, halfway down the block, another six bollards for the street and one on each sidewalk. And then, on each corner, left and right on Bourbon, not just the direction the street goes, but going the other way as well. Someone could go up those side streets and hook a left on Bourbon, go against traffic. Come up towards the river and hook a right on Bourbon. So, that's what it's gonna be, four bollards to block the street, one on each sidewalk. Terrorist-proof, that level, that high-end, that, that strong. Just that Pee-wee Herman guy on Fox, that says he's a New Orleanian, Arroyo, Araya, whatever his name is. I don't even know who the guy is. Never heard of him except for the last like year or two on Fox. But spouts off like he's New Orleans native son and everybody knows who this guy is in, in New Orleans. I mean, if you watch Fox News, I guess you know who he is. I think most New Orleanians don't know who Tyrus is, the former wrestler on Fox at night, unless you watch Fox News, you know. And they have no idea who the Pee-wee Herman-looking guy is. But the Pee-wee Herman guy is just dog in the city, dog in the police, police chief didn't know those archers even existed. I mean, think about that. Those big yellow sidewalk, that they're using on the sidewalk, which are meant for a street, which are meant to use like three, four in a row and you strap them together and it blocks the street. He definitely could use one temporarily on the sidewalk. For him to pounce on the police chief, not knowing those existed? Do you think the police chief knows about every city of New Orleans thing? No one was calling for those to be on the sidewalk. I've never, ever seen one of those on a sidewalk in my life. I'm not saying it hasn't happened. I'd love someone to call the show, seven-six-six-nine-four-eighty, and tell me they saw one of those big, yellow archers with the wheels on a sidewalk in the French Quarter. People love Monday quarterbacking. Where was the media, myself included? Hey, why? Wasn't even thinking about that. Wasn't even thinking about the Super Bowl being the deadline for all these projects. Instead of like last summer, it was like, boy, Jeff Landry, thank God he stepped up. No one would've done this, just kinda used to the dysfunction of New Orleans, myself included. And when Jeff Landry stepped up, I was like, thumbs up. At least he's thinking about it, because this mayor and the council's not. Great job, appoint Michael Heck to cover four, five hundred, you know, punch list items that the city needs to, to knock out before the Super Bowl. I love it. Not before the Super Bowl, like before the summer of the Super Bowl. Before the summer of the Super Bowl. Maybe before Essence Fest. So, Essence folks over July fourth wouldn't have to come in and deal with sidewalk and street closures and construction going on. A city, you know, like major repairs everywhere. And then, of course, come December and end of November, I, the classic New Orleans Bowl, Sugar Bowl, college football playoff, and then the Super Bowl. You, you come in for Taylor Swift, you come in for the Sugar Bowl and there's sidewalk construction, road construction in the French Quarter? It's crazy, like, get ready for the Super Bowl. Just sends a message out how half-assed and dysfunctional New Orleans is doing it so late. It's like going into the game, don't touch the railing, fresh paint. You know, it's like, it's game time, it's kickoff time, don't touch the railing, fresh paint, what? So, we were late to the game. John Bell Edwards should've been, you know, hey, get Michael Heck, let's come up with a punch list. Let's make sure New Orleans doesn't embarrass itself, that Louisiana doesn't embarrass itself for a Super Bowl. Well, thank God for Jeff Landry coming up with that, and thank God he appointed Michael Heck. But, yeah, doing it late, doing it late in the game. But even if we were doing it early in the game, there would've been that barrier in the up position and the sidewalk to the left at Canal and Bourbon had more than enough room for a Ford F-150 Lightning to get through. And even if the four bollards were up at Bourbon and Iberville on the right sidewalk by Felix's, more than enough room, even more room, about nine feet wide, hundred-eight inches, I measured it with the tape measure today. About nine feet wide at Bourbon and Canal on that left sidewalk. And about twelve feet between Felix's and the bollard and the street at Iberville in the very next block. So, even if everything was working right, the city had their, you know, what together and the Super Bowl prep was done by summer, last summer, this terrorist guy who went around the corner, went around Canal Street, went around Bourbon Street, saw the situation, would've been like, I can jump the sidewalk, I can go down another sidewalk. Or would've hit another vulnerable point. It's a North American city, it's a world city, tourist convention areas. You're gonna have, you know, vulnerable points, and there's no way to protect them all, impossible. Come autograph parade route, five miles long, impossible. Some jerk blows through those metal NOPD barricades and can just run over a bunch of people. When, when a terrorist wants to, and, and doesn't mind dying, when ninety-nine point nine-nine-nine percent of the population doesn't want to die, they don't mind dying, it's just almost impossible to stop. Now, it's been stopped by politicians mentioning, you know, you know, barriers weren't up, uh, you know, not knowing what, what barriers or where they are, where bollards are, just mauling off. Wouldn't have happened at the Barry Hall, would've happened somewhere else. Would've happened somewhere else. Just irresponsible. And then media types like the Pee-wee Herman guy on Fox, who's from New Orleans apparently. Dog in the police, you didn't know these archers even existed? Yeah, didn't know, didn't know. You know how many city assets that the mayor, council, the police chief, the people have no idea they exist? And they're, that's just a big, heavy metal thing that can be used to block the sidewalk. It's not meant to block the sidewalk. It's in no game plan to block the sidewalk. Go get the yellow archers to block the French Quarter sidewalks, because a terrorist could come up the sidewalk. Never been discussed, never been talked about. You could park a NOPD SUV on the sidewalk and do the job. There's probably a bunch of heavy metal items in city warehouses. You could put the old Robert E. Lee statue there and block the sidewalk. I mean, it's so ridiculous, like these archers and the, the, the police chief should've known they existed and used them. Just, the Monday quarterback in the after-the-fact crap is mind-blowing. People just have no idea, no depth, no knowledge, shooting from the hip, not making sense, illogical. You know, the Pee-wee Herman guy went off, it was on social media, millions of views. And it's wrong. And those yellow archers, you get basically a, you know, a little, it's a little two-wheelie little thing called, just a little, you know, jeez.
It's gonna come to me in the middle of the night now.
Exactly. Anyway, a little, mini little truck thing you'd use to move boxes or whatever.
Like a hand truck or a dolly.
Exactly, a little hand truck and dolly, which is the slightest little adapter to it. Or, or just like a serious like, uh, you know, nylon cable that you can wrap her, you could use that to move one of those archers. Because that's how they're moved, a little two-wheel dolly-type thing that you literally stick a metal rod in it, stick these, these pegs in it, and then you, you bend it back and it pops it up and it rolls away. So, those yellow things are for blocking a road, multiple ones strapped together. That's what they're designed for, not just one by itself to block a sidewalk. Literally, some terrorist could have his buddy with the little dolly thing, and who's gonna stop someone hooking a dolly up and moving that? Hey, man, that's to stop terrorists, you're not supposed to move that, dude, just a citizen. And then the truck's up the sidewalk before you know it. All of this stuff is overblown, it is ridiculous, the criticism of the city. New Orleans, I mean, it's dysfunctional, we're broken. The barrier should be working, the bollard should be working. You know, where did the forty million of the Mitcheloo federal money go? A lot of crime cameras, apparently, and some other things. But to act like the, that Bourbon should've been terrorist-proof is, no one was saying that anywhere. Yet all these media pundits are saying it after, why wouldn't you say it before the fact? And, and, and people aren't even talking right now. I went down there with the tape measure and measured from the building to the, where the bollard would be at Bourbon and Iberville, and from the building to where this, this barrier is right now, and, and the sidewalk's wide enough in both spots for a Ford F-150 Lightning to go through. Why isn't anyone mentioning the simple solution that four bollards in the street, but then one more on each sidewalk? So, it'd be six bollards across, one in the sidewalk, four blocking the street, and one in the other sidewalk. Easy for pedestrians to get through, hard for vehicles to get through. Now, hardening the quarter in Bourbon Street would be easy. Heavy-duty bollards at every corner from Bourbon to Canal and Bourbon to Bourbon Esplanade, in each direction, on every corner. Tight streets, historic buildings, narrow, European, that's easy. The St. Charles Avenue parade route, impossible, impossible, impossible. Can't do it, can't do it. This is almost like, you know, you see in New York, these sick individuals that will push someone into the subway. Happened last week. Some guy pushed this eighteen, twenty-two-year-old kid, pushed this like forty-five-year-old man right onto the tracks. Luckily, he survived, they found the kid, he's gonna go to jail for the rest of his life. In Japan, they had a wall, like a window wall across the entire platform where the tracks start. And then they have these double doors that line up with the doors of the train. So, the train doors open and then this window wall of doors open. Not because in Japan they have violent people, you know, pushing people onto the tracks, committing a crime, committing a murder, because they have a suicide problem where French jump in front of the train in Japan and commit suicide. So to prevent that, they put up the wall. Next time someone dies in America, when someone pushes him in front of a subway train, the city is irresponsible for not building the Japanese-style wall to prevent that? That's what you're gonna tell me, or this criminal is, you know, is the one that's responsible? Maybe eventually we get these walls built by every subway system in America so no one anywhere could get pushed in front of a subway train. Maybe that happens, like in Japan. But because it hasn't happened, doesn't mean the city's irresponsible. And to say New Orleans, you know, should have had these measures in place, terrorist would have gone somewhere else. Poynter Street, Georgia, Notre Dame fans walking into the dome by the thousands, tens of thousands, would have jumped a curb and run them over. No way to prevent it. No, the quarter will be hard because it's a soft target. It will be hardened with these, you know, serious fortified poles, Pollard's that'll stop them. A vehicular terrorist tech, some terrorists carrying a bag with a bomb or an automatic weapon and shooting at the crowd and doesn't mind dying, how do you stop that? I mean, I just think a lot of the irresponsible politicians and irresponsible media members even, and the Pollard and barrier fixation is mind blowing, mind blowing. I'm one of the most honest, fair, objective people in New Orleans media. I'm on the city and its dysfunction, the state and its dysfunction, the corrupt, inept politicians like white on rice, like stink on poop, I'm on it. You don't think I would be whipping the city for incompetence? No, it's an easy, speaking of soft target, that's an easy target for folks that wanna bash the city, for media folks that wanna get clicks. You wanna know what the problem is? It just spreads the word. Why would you highlight that? I mean, I couldn't believe Oliver Thomas on CNN talking about the Bourbon Street. Hey, let's not forget about this Boo out in New Orleans East, the store owner who was murdered. It's like, wow, let's bring up a violent murder on CNN, this arbitrary murder. Look, I feel for them, I've read the articles, I've watched the stuff. A mother, a patriarch, her daughter, they own the store. It's just wrong, getting murdered, just cowardly, pathetic, an older woman getting murdered, a store owner in the east contributes to that community that needs a grocery. Find that idiot, get him in jail, put him away for life. But why bring that up arbitrarily, Oliver Thomas? And then this Pee Wee Herman guy, Aunt Kirkpatrick needs to be fired because she didn't know the archers existed? If she knew, they wouldn't have put them down there anyway. No one was requesting blocking sidewalks, making it terrorist proof. It was all about putting an SUV there like the Pollard's or the barriers are for strictly to make Bourbon Street and pedestrian mall and not have vehicular traffic there, not terrorist proof. Let's hit the phone lines, Rouse's Markets phone lines, 766-9480. Rouse's Markets phone lines, 766-9480. Larry joins us in the French Quarter. What's happening Larry? How you doing man?
Hey, how, okay, uh, you know, I've been getting, I'm 77, I've been getting a newspaper in my hands for, I don't know, 70 years, something like that.
Yep.
Uh, the Times-News, every day, read it every day. Uh, you know, it takes 10 minutes, whatever. But this, their coverage of this is not borderline irresponsible, it's non-professional. You've got reporters quoting, well, you've probably covered it, I've just beaten.
No, 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 tell us what you think.
This is ridiculous.
What, what?
My daughter's quarterback and by the way, can he just go away? This guy, I mean, he's, anyway, I'm glad you're covering this, I'm glad you're standing up for, I mean, if whatever we didn't have this guy and he, I gotta tell you, I don't, I don't think you could classify him as a terrorist. You know, I'm just going all over the place. What I'm saying about today is the Jane won six people, they're not terrorists. I just wonder, you know what would have happened to Trump if they had killed Nancy Pelosi? Where would he be, would he have finally done something to this guy? He opened it.
Well, let's not, let's not go off all over the place. Like, hang on a second Larry, I wanna ask you a couple of questions. You were about to say that the Times-News not doing a good job, they got reporters saying what?
That, that, the, all of the things that were in place are inadequate and the ones that are going at them are, you know, couldn't stop, uh, this.
No, I think, I think that's good reporting, the second part, that the city of New Orleans bought the cheapest Pollard's possible and they're not terrorist proof. And that's what's coming for the Super Bowl? It's like, we better get an emergency order in of something that is terrorist proof or why are we even bringing those in? So that, that's part of the journalistic thing I like, that's good stuff to know. But I think the part about the, you know, the barrier wasn't up and not saying that the truck could have gone down the sidewalk, which it did, the Pollard torn up in Everville could have gone by Felix's on the sidewalk. So I think there's a lot of just emphasis on Pollard's and barriers that's, you know, and the 2017 $40 million that Landry secured and the people saying you need to make, you know, Bourbon Street terrorists. Where else in New Orleans needs to be terrorist proof? I guarantee you, like Jackson Square, part of the St. Charles Avenue Parade Route, that's, that's terrible. Think, I mean, there's probably several things. Where's all that reporting? So no, it's, it's easy, like you said, to play Monday quarterback.
I think everybody would like to see an accounting of the 40 million dollars that was appropriated, that, that, that's been unbelievable about, for what, what this could drive.
And the you're not a terrorist comment? I kind of admire what you're saying. Was that an act of terror? No doubt. This guy is like a super loser, that's life fell apart, lost his wife, family, doesn't wanna be around him, lost his job, he's just a, he's an idiot. And, and, and then got, you know, oh, my life sucks, it's America's fault, you know? He's obviously mentally broken, embraced this ISIS crap just recently, you know? So, uh, you know, I'm, this isn't some ISIS salad, this is like a newcomer that has a broken life and easily was, you know, fixate with ISIS and embracing that. That's my opinion, but yes, it's an act of terror, no doubt. He's a terrorist, but not like, you know, he's an ISIS fanatic.
Yeah, he's not attached to anything official, lack of a better word.
Exactly, that's exactly right. He just jumped on the bandwagon recently. Yep, thanks Larry. It's Larry in the French Quarter, letting me go. I want some good comments. Bye Larry. Rouse's Markets phone line, 766-9480. Hey, all Smoothie Kings are not alike. I'll be heading after work to the Smoothie King I go to, you know, I live over by the Suge Waterburg, kind of the Carrollton River Bend neighborhood, right by the parish line. That Smoothie King on Jefferson Highway across from Oster, three minutes from my house. And not all Smoothie Kings are the same. I've come to appreciate Jay and his dad and their two Smoothie King locations that do me right every time. Jefferson Highway across from Oster and the Old Metairie Smoothie King, Airline at LeBarre by Causeway and that Rouse's Shopping Center. All different franchise owners at Smoothie King. Not all Smoothie Kings are the same, far from it, experience the best. Smoothie King, Jefferson Highway across from Oster. Smoothie King, Old Metairie, Airline, LeBarre by Causeway by that Rouse's, that Rouse's Shopping Center. 41 degrees then, temperature plummeting. It'll be, you know, wake up in the morning tomorrow, about 33 degrees on the South Shore. That means mid to high twenties on the North Shore. That means both sides of the lake, triple peak in effect. Protect pets, planets, pilots, especially the pets, come on. My outdoor cat, Puffy, I got the back shed with a couple of heaters in there going. Got a little crack in the door, an old drop cord blocking where the wind would come in. It'd probably be about 50 degrees in there when it's 30 degrees outside and the wind's blowing, making it feel like 20. So about a 20 or 33 different, Puffy by outdoor cat will be very happy inside the shed. They gotta prep up for those animals, take care of what's this cold weather. President Biden, First Lady Jill Biden, in New Orleans as we speak, they were in the French Quarter a little while ago. I'm sure they're gonna be beelining out of Dodge soon, I don't know the exact schedule. But the I-10 going westbound, I'm sure within the next hour or so will be shut down from the CBD to the airport for the president and his motorcade. President Joe Biden, First Lady Jill Biden, down at Ground Zero, Canal Bourbon, Canal at Everville, 300 block of Bourbon where the terrorists finally stopped running into that kind of cherry picker, that construction equipment. Corey Johnson with you on a Monday. If you missed the four o'clock hour, you missed a lot. Arnie Filco joins us, former New Orleans City Council President. In the next few weeks, he's gonna decide if he's gonna run for council district A or not, I hope so. We need more people like Arnie Filco representing us, the people. Hey, representing us, Hellpaint and Decorating, decorating, 55 years in New Orleans, free two-hour delivery so you can keep painting, Benjamin Moore, high-quality paint, seven locations, East Bank, West Bank, Yorkshire, Metro New Orleans, four Baton Rouge locations. That's right, Tiger Town, when you gotta paint in the capital city, Hellpaint and Decorating, free two-hour delivery, high-quality Benjamin Moore paint. Yep, when you gotta paint in Metro New Orleans, when you gotta paint in Metro Baton Rouge, do it once, do it right, Hellpaint and Decorating.
Custom window trim is gonna make the look and value of your home. Hellpaint and Decorating, they offer custom plantation-style window shutters by Sketia. With the training we're doing, large trains, French doors, sliding doors and arches, American-made SLS shutters are available in many colors to match your personal decor. We're looking at that, you would see fast delivery, plus they're virtually millions free. Hellpaint Benjamin Moore, let us see you in the right direction. Yolz Dry Cleaning has free pickup and delivery. That's right, Yolz Dry Cleaning has absolutely free pickup and delivery over all this east bank and west bank. Call Yolz at 288-381, or line at yolzdrycleaning.com.
One where the same old brands as everyone else is aware, four net worth brands come to heart and pride throughout the nation, not just a black girl's story, it's one of the finest eyewear shops in the country, like here in New Orleans, with a premium engine, with a special design, and gorgeous high-quality shoulders from the heart of Europe, Japan, and the United States. Our products are thought and trusted and our staff are here to help you find exactly the right friends, optimize and market it in a possible way.
Have experienced the best smoothies in the metro area, that's Smoothie King. James is. He's a decade on Jefferson Highway, across the Airline Highway at LeBarre by Causeway, Smoothie King. Ladies and gentlemen, then there's the water, the ground, or something called, I call it, real warm, you know, strong, servicing the transmission, doing all major models and, 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 and,[1548.62] Tracy's is inside of a 100 year old room, with one, screen TVs, including a 120 inch truck. Tracy's has everything you're looking for in a sports car, including arguably the best Pro Boy in town. And it's time to check out your favorite teams. Make it Tracy's on magazine in between Washington and Louisiana. Legendary Tracy's in the Garden District.
I want to stay somewhere special in visiting New Orleans, to the Grand Victorian, located in the Garden District on the St. Charles Avenue Street Carbine, where the Grand Victorian is ideally a place for visiting the city's local attractions, fabulous restaurants, shops, and more. To stay in New Orleans is something to remember. To find out more about the Grand Victorian or the book, go to GVVB.com, Grand Victorian. The Port of New Orleans is the gateway to global commerce, the economic engine of Louisiana and our country forward. For more than 125 years, Port Nola has continued to deliver the goods we use each and every day, by river, rail, and by roof. No matter what, it all happens right here, delivering Louisiana's future at the Port of New Orleans. You're working with it. Learn more about your Port of New Orleans, visit portnola.com.
Hey, Maryine, hot water, today, French Quarter, CBD, Warehouse History, Garden District, Irish Channel, it's Corey Johnson on the neutral ground, where New Orleans is heard.
This is really like a public service announcement. With this cold water, if your heat is not working right or not working at all, you wanna go with an AC outfit that is honest, folks that are incapable, screw around it, they're, they're not even thinking of taking advantage of you. That's just what's heard. No, you need to go with fair and honest Lucas and the boys at Total Maintenance. Total Maintenance has a sterling reputation in South Louisiana for 40 plus years. Lucas is incapable, his crew, of some service repair, even replacement, that is not absolutely necessary. They're air conditioning and heating experts over 30 techs, hundreds of years combined experience. My AC went out about a year ago, Lucas diagnosed it right on the phone, on the phone. Honest AC heating experts that come immediately, because your AC or heat's not working right. It's cold out there. If your heat's making a funny noise, not working right, or worse, not working at all, you don't have to sleep in the cold, you don't have to go to a hotel, you don't have to go to the in-laws, you call fair and honest Lucas and the boys at Total Maintenance. In New Orleans, in Baton Rouge, you need heat help? Total Maintenance, TM-ac.com. If you need heat help, weekday, weekend, overnight, holiday, Total Maintenance is there. Heat help in New Orleans or Baton Rouge, TM-ac.com, that's Total Maintenance. Arnie Filco joined us last hour, he might run for council again, might run for council again. President Joe Biden, First Lady Jill Biden, in New Orleans right now, they were in the quarter a little while ago, still might be. I went down to Ground Zero, Bourbon and Canal, Bourbon and Hiperville, brought a tape measure with me. A Ford F-150 Lightning is 80 inches wide. The gap between the barrier and the building, Canal and Bourbon, 108 inches wide. A foot plus 50 inches on either side of the Ford F-150, easy to get through. That's where the barrier is, and if the barrier was up, could have gone on the left sidewalk. The next block, if the bollards were there, could have gone on the right sidewalk by Felix's, even wider, about 12 feet wide. I brought a tape measure down there. No bollards on the sidewalk. And these archers, these yellow archers they brought in and put on the sidewalk, they're just there because they're big metal blockade type things. They're meant to be used on a street, several of them hooked together by a cable. They could have put anything big there, NOPD cruiser, those things, anything. What they need is a bollard on the sidewalk. Four across the street and one on each sidewalk, problem solved. Problem solved. Hey, problem solved for your favorite sports team? You wanna- Your favorite sports teams, like NFL playoffs cranking up, no Saints, but NFL playoffs cranking up. Pelicans on a two game win streak, wanna check out the Pels? Wanna check out LSU men or women's hoops? Tulane? Wanna check out Premier League soccer? Tracy's, legendary Tracy's, magazine at Pleasant, between Washington and Louisiana. New location, bigger and better than ever. Too many flat screens to count. And yes, home of that great roast beef pro boy. Wanna check out your favorite sports teams? Tracy's, magazine at Pleasant, legendary Tracy's. Boy, does a rinse and repeat weather thing for the next week, 10 days, 30s and 40s. Yeah, cold weather for New Orleans, our standards, 30s and 40s. North Shore, high 20s, freezing when we wake up. That's for like, next week, week and a half now. The North Shore will have some above freezing mornings, and New Orleans will have some mornings where we start like it's 40. But, a lot of 40s and 50s, excuse me, 30s and 40s, not 40s and 50s, excuse me, lots of 30s and 40s for Metro New Orleans over the next week to 10 days. That's brutal. Run below, get out the big coat, get the gloves out, the scarf, the hat, it's cold out there. And the wind chill, right now, in the 30s, all over the metro, not just on the North Shore with that wind chill. Wanna thank the corporal for pushing the buttons, feeling the phone calls. Wanna thank Arnie Filco for joining us last hour, he might run for council, that would be fantastic. And I wanna thank Blue Boy. Pressure great, Blue Boy. What's up? I would like to win, I mentioned some irresponsible media covering this tragedy, this terror attack, and some irresponsible local politicians, you're darned tootin'. Blue Boy, in New Orleans, see you on Tuesday, 4 p.m. Be there, be here.
You're on the neutral ground, Corey Johnson, on TV on Cox Channel 4 and Canal Channel 333, also on YouTube, on radio at Nolotalk 93.9 FM, WSLA New Orleans.
It's 6 p.m.